One o'clock, so I'm gonna call the order to meeting, the meeting to order. And we'll start with the Fledge of Legions.
My Fledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
I'll second. We have, we have moved to approve in a second from... Chris.
Chris. One second, I may sure.
Shuri. I think it was the other way around.
Shuri moved, I seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, approval of the minutes passed. Approval of the agenda, I'm sorry. So the approval of the minutes, November 16th minutes, if everyone's take a look at that.
I didn't see anything. I'll move approval of the minutes.
Steve has moved to approve the minutes, do you have a second? Shuri has seconded, all in favor?
Right.
Opposed? So approval of the minutes passes. So now we'll move on to new business. We have docket PC 12211701 to consider the petition of Winona Solar LLC and Mish Properties at 18888 County Road 28, Eltura, to allow community solar garden pursuant to Chapter 12.3 of the Winona County zoning ordinance.
Yeah, maybe staff, yes, staff presentation.
Staff, you have a presentation?
Alright, so this site sits along the bend of County Road 28 there where Fern Valley Drive cuts down the valley in Section 28 of Mount Vernon Township. And that's the approximate how it will sit based on their site design, so it's gonna be right on the 130-foot setback from the road. It's gonna produce 1 megawatt, cover about 10 acres, and have 10,000 to 12,000 single-axis tractor solar panels that are oriented north to south, and they'll follow the sun throughout the day. It's located up on top of the ridge, the nearest house is this one right here, about 750 feet to the southeast. And yeah, whoops, sorry, there's five houses, including the property owners, within the half-mile of the site. So the zoning ordinance requires the CUP because the site's on greater than an acre for a solar development, and we also need to consider the performance standards for Chapters 10.7.4, which is just like the height regulations, setback regulations, and 12.3, which is all the solar ordinance stuff. So currently, there is not any plan to plant any vegetative screening, but the petitioners have indicated that they're gonna comply with any county recommendations, and I know they were reaching out to neighboring property owners to ask them if they wanted any screening, planted to block their views. But because of its location right along the corner of County Road 28, we're recommending a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees along the south and east side to give it a little separation from the road there, because it will be fairly visible coming around that corner. And this video kinda highlight that, so I'm starting here, facing to the southwest, looking at the applicant's home, yep, you can play that. So I'm gonna rotate here, come to the north, and there's one house that you can see off in the distance up there, but that's greater than a half-mile away, and as I come around, there's quite a bit of vegetation here that already screens that nearest home that was 750 feet to the southeast, and there's a pretty clear sightline to the petitioner's property, and then there's some vegetation blocking one of the other houses, that's the nearest, I believe, is like 1,200 feet away. Thank you, any questions?
Does the petitioner have anything they would like to come up and say? When you get up to the podium, please state your name and your address.
My name is Rick Ahern, my address is N. 1955 385th Street, Leighton Rock, Wisconsin. And the main thing I would like to add is that we're more than willing to provide the recommended screening. We did talk to some of the neighboring property owners, it didn't indicate any real issue to that, but because it is on a highway there, and quite a few other people will be driving by it, we would be willing to plant the deciduous trees around the whole highway corridor there if that's what the county prefers to see, we're more than willing to do that. I think that's probably the main issue. Some of the other neighbors that I did speak to had, and some of the other questions that I've heard from other people in the area with regards to is the stray voltage issue, we are more than willing to cooperate with the testing as required by the county for stray voltage. We did recommend to planting that it follow the IEEE stray voltage testing procedure standard, and the county did not have a copy of that standard, so we'll get that from them, that's the standard that's endorsed by the state of Minnesota and used by Excel Energy. And that's pretty much it, all of the other conditions asked of us, we will gladly provide and do, meet those requests. We will provide a decommissioning plan, and we will pay the bond required for that, so... Any other questions that the board may have?
Madam Chairman? May I ask some question?
Thanks.
Hi, Mr. Ahern, you work for a company called Community Energy Solar?
That's correct.
And the company is out of Pennsylvania?
Radford, Pennsylvania, correct.
And how long has the company been in business?
Company's been in business for almost 19 years.
And do you have any other community solar gardens in the state?
In the state of Minnesota, we have four projects under construction, and we have another, right now I've got seven more going through the permitting process. Our company also built the North Star Solar Project to Shisago County, that's the largest solar project in the upper Midwest, that was 100 megawatts and 800 acres in size.
Thanks.
One other thing I might mention that our project is doing that many of the other solar gardens is not doing, under the state law, we have to market to subscribers for the energy. This project will market to residential subscribers as our first priority to residential subscribers within the Excel territory in the area and the county first, and if, if we can't meet our, we need about 250 subscribers for a project like this, then we would go to neighboring counties for residential subscribers as well. We found that so far, all of our projects have been to residential subscribers, and all have waiting lists for additional subscribers.
So you're gonna be 100%?
Yes.
Residential?
That's what we're anticipating, yes.
Well, fabulous.
Anything else?
Yeah, so, and there's, and you're confident that the power lines that run through the area can...
Yes, yeah, yeah, interconnection study was done by Excel Energy, any upgrades necessary, there are some upgrades needed to the substation and to a little bit of conductor into the line, and we are making and paying those fees to do that, that's necessary there. It's not a great deal.
So it happens to be very near the two wind turbines? Do you know what's the power output of those versus this facility?
I guess that's, I don't know that exactly, but that was taken into consideration with the study from the interconnection study from Excel as to what the total capacity of those lines are, and what, you know, what our project would contribute versus what other generating projects are on that line, and, and that determination was made by Excel that it's adequate. Again, there are some, some minor upgrades that we need to make with, with the project to the lines in the system, but we are paying for those ourselves as part of the project cost.
Seems like it would be a good fit, because I hardly ever see those turbines run.
I've heard the same stories, that they haven't operated very much at all since their initial commissioning.
The concern would be is if, you know what, so sunny afternoon, solar's producing maximum, and then the wind comes up and they decide they're gonna turn them things on. Do you feel that area farmers, there, you know, there had been problems with stray voltage in the area, do you feel that's all addressed well?
I believe it is, and, and that's, that's one of the requirements of the county, that we, as well as the, the wind generation facility, have those requirements, and with the solar facility, we have some additional requirements from Excel above, in that power production. You know, one of the biggest issues we always have with, with solar is what they call peaking, with, for example, you have a cloud cover go over, and, and the cloud suddenly passes over, and all of the power surges up, that we have to limit that surge so that it doesn't overpower the lines, or, or if the wind is operating at the same time, that, that our generation at that time would not overpower the lines either. So that equipment will be in place, that type of equipment is owned by Excel and placed on our facility, even though we pay for that.
Okay, that answers my questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to open the public hearing.
I'll second. Okay, so Steve made the motion, and Chris, I can't remember her name, seconded. So we'll open, we'll open up to public hearing now? Oh, I'm sorry, we have to vote. Is every... Yeah, all those in favor, opening the public hearing.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, the public hearing is open. So now is this one I ask? Okay, so is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak for or against docket number PC 12211701, Winona Solar Garden and Mish Properties? For the second time, is there anyone who would like to come and speak for or against docket PC 12211701? For the third time, is there anyone who would like to step forward and speak for or against PC 12211701?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
I'll second. Steve moved, and Chris seconded to close the public hearing, and the public hearing is now closed. We gotta vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now it's closed. Now we can discuss, right? Okay, now we can discuss. I, I have a question. For this number eight condition, are we gonna, is that gonna be changed then to include the, to conform to the IEEE standard?
Condition number eight was taken verbatim from the previous solar applications along County Road 1 in the southeast part of the county. The petitioners are the ones that want that extra language added to the condition, so I guess that's up to you. We haven't had a chance to review that language, because it was behind a paywall, and for 137 bucks to read the article, so we didn't do that. We just got this information today at four o'clock, so we haven't had a chance to read that standard, so that's up to you, you guys.
Madam Chairman? I sort of feel that before I would change the language, I would wanna understand what the difference between the two was, and it sounds like staff hasn't been able to do that for us, if that appears that way. Can the petitioner tell us? Can the petitioner tell us the difference between our language relating to stray voltage and the change?
Yeah, the only, the only difference was the addition of the IEEE standard, I believe it's 1695, and that is the standard that's, that's recommended by the Minnesota Department of Commerce, and Excel Energy has adapted for their testing procedures. We only asked that that be added in there, because our finance and banking mortgage companies, investment group has asked that that be added in, basically to provide a, a standard that has some limits of costs involved with it, and, and some definitions of how the testing occurs, and how that's done. That testing can be done by any party, it doesn't have to be done by Excel Energy, but it's a standard that's accepted within the state of Minnesota.
Oh, I'm sorry, Eric?
I'd just like to add that what they submitted is that separate email document, and then this one, your findings of fact document, the only changes between the two, one recommends, what they recommend, from, they, what they added, is that now, that that's only changed, that they wish to add.
Yeah, I also add that I can and will provide a copy of that standard to county party, if you wish to make that, if you want to review that standard, it's acceptable, then next time.
In the absence of saying that standard, you would do it to that standard, am I right? Yeah, okay. Madam Chairman, Eric, do you have a copy of that email?
I do.
I thought I had it.
I'll pass you mine if you'd like to see it.
Thank you.
Would you pass this down?
I thought it was on, on the desk.
It was on the table.
So what do we do, are we still discussing?
Yeah, I think there, I think there's some... So I guess, in the spirit of a little bit of discussion here, stray voltage is probably one of the bigger concerns with the solar facility, and there's been some lawsuits from stray voltage, I think recently in Wisconsin. It looks to me like the applicant intends to take the necessary precautions. If stray voltage does happen, that's still a liability of the applicant, if, if, that's not something that we can really solve. If, if a neighbor, if their herd is damaged from stray voltage, and they sue the applicant, we don't, we don't have any control over any of that. So I think that speaks to that, it's in the best interest of the applicant and the company they're working with to address stray voltage issues.
Yeah, and, so I don't, it's, I don't think they're asking to be let out of it, I think they're just asking to have one line to be added.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, too. And I think if the line wasn't there, they would still do it to that standard, and it's probably true that the other companies have been doing it to that standard as well, although, you know, of course, we don't know. Along those lines, I think that I would also like to go ahead and adopt the recommendations that staff has made about the landscape and the screening.
I don't have concerns with the screening, one way or the other. The screening, I think, came, the original idea of screening came from when these solar developments were going in areas where there was bluff top development, and there was standards that you wanted to screen a house, and then we were, because people didn't wanna see the house, now the solar, had the same standards. To me, I don't care whether I drive by, and I can see the solar panels or not, it's in a, in a field, but if the applicant doesn't care, and the planning commission wants to do it, and that's how we've done it with the other ones, that's all. I don't find the panels offensive.
Madam Chair, staff has received calls when screening wasn't in place, or it wasn't adequate, even though it wasn't bluff related, and so, from the general public calling in and saying, gosh, you know, they need to add some, or where, where is it I can see it? So that's what we, why we started recommending.
It is pretty close to the road, on that corner.
And I was, I was thinking of something like this, I don't mean to get in, but, you know, maybe there's something we could put in permit that, I know there's another one coming up too here tonight, that I, I live nearby, and it, to me, it don't bother me, but there is someone that lives close by, and they did give me a call with a little bit of concern. Maybe there's something in permits we can give to where, if somebody wants it up there within a year? You know, I, I don't know how to address that issue, but, you know, I guess, we need to look at, you know, the other people that are out there. I don't see them here, but, you know, they said they, they would like to have something up there, and I think there's maybe some way to put something in their permits that, you know, if some would like some screening up there within a year's time, it gives them the time to decide whether they want it or not. I, I don't know how to handle that one.
So this one does say within a year?
Okay. But it has to be established for that a year?
Yeah. I think they're at least saying if somebody requests it within a year, but, I mean, I sort of feel like if the petitioner's willing to do it...
Well, yeah, that's fine.
Let's just do it. Let's just ask them to do it.
But I mean, we, we may come along where the petitioner's not gonna do it unless they're asked to do it, not necessarily these.
So I think we should put it in...
We did have trouble with one other one, it took them a while to get it done, and they had to speak to them a few times to get it done.
Yeah.
The only thing I was looking at on the screening is, it's, I've driven that road plenty of times, so it's gotta be outside of the county right away, because now you're on the inside of a road, and hoping that that vegetation doesn't grow out into the sightlines, so... But, planning committee isn't supposed to be acknowledged?
Oh, sorry.
One, one quick point from the staff standpoint, any proposed plantings by the petitioner would be run through, you know, as part of the landscape plan, so that, you know, safety and sightlines of the design are respected for motorists and bicyclists and anybody that would be traveling.
Can we go through the findings?
Can we, can, can we make a motion just with the findings, or do you wanna go through them all?
I would be thrilled to make the motion, and... Alright, I move that we approve this, accept staff's findings about the conditions, including the Excel standard. Yes. And vegetation, screening.
I'll second it.
Okay, so a move has been made and seconded to accept the recommendation with all the conditions listed as they are, with the addition of the standard to number eight, and including the condition with the vegetation, is that correct? All in favor?
Yeah. Any further discussion?
Oh, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Yes, this is just the planning commission recommendation, now it will go before the county board, do they need it this year?
I don't think it'll make the 20, it won't make, it won't make this meeting, will it?
In January, probably in January.
Yeah, we've got one more meeting this year, soon. Can you say in January?
I believe it's, I can give that, I can give that information, yet we're just going to the county board.
Can we move on to the next petition for this evening, which is docket PC 12211702, consider the petition for Winona Solar LLC and Nathan J. Gibbs at 18409 County Road 114 Rolling Stone, Minnesota, to allow a community solar garden pursuant to Chapter 12.3 of Winona County zoning ordinance, staff?
This is fairly similar to the other ones, and I'll try and point out the slight differences between them, and it's a little bit bigger, it's 11 acres versus 10 acres. And it's, you can see that it's located a little further south, it's between Highway 248 and County Road 114. The difference is, this is in a little bit lower elevation, and you can see by the contours, it's a little bit steeper. The purple line represents the setback from Highway 248, and there's also that little red area, which shows the bluff land setback. These are also going north and south, the blue represents the type 2 soils, and the blue represents the type 3 soils. And the difference, the other difference is, these are, there's some locations that are fairly close, there's one that's within 370 feet, and there's also one within 780 feet, and what it makes it a little bit more difficult also, is because those locations are pretty much on the same contour, where the other ones, the ones that are further away are on the upper contour. So those ones that are close can be seen because they're closer, and they're also pretty similar to the same contour.
But they're outside of the, like the bluff zone, right?
Yes, yes. Yeah, you can see the red line, or that red area, that's the bluff, bluff, so they are on the, and we have to meet the standards of the Winona County zoning ordinance. Again, they did not recommend any screening, but we did put it in our conditions, and it's condition number three. I'll show you the video, but I'm gonna go back to that other, what we're doing here is, we're gonna be standing about right there, and then we're gonna be going down and around, so where, you'll see the truck, that's where the truck is located, where we're taking it is from right there, and then we're circling around west to north, and we'll see their location, and going back again. I'll also try to point out this two areas, there's two areas that you can see this a little bit, but it's kinda covered because there's trees down here, and you can also see a little area that's gonna be open here, and these are where the screening should happen. Play the video, please. Okay, so we're going down southeast, and see the one area right there... Okay, so we're going down southeast and see the one area right there and there's one area right there. Those are the few open areas where the closest residences. Now, we're going west and we're coming more towards the north and that's where their property is. And then we're going to the east and then southeast again and back to the same location. Thank you. Any questions?
So, I don't know if it'd be for you or for the petitioner, but I didn't realize they were this close in proximity. These are, again, close to those two point turbines. So, are, is this solar connection going to the same lines that the other solar panel farm? Are they all going to the same power?
The same substations, different lines.
Same substation, different lines?
Different, yeah, different distribution lines, but the same substation.
All right. And I'm not an, an authority to understand.
The substation, oh, you, you, no, you go ahead. The substation they're going to, Rick, is the one on 114?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Steve.
No. So, again, the proximity of the amount of power being generated in this area?
Yeah. This, the, the solar farm at the, at the, at the Gibbs farm will connect directly at the substation, to the power line right at the substation. So, it's not.
That should be better.
It is making a tie-in to the distribution line at that point, but it's, it's right there at the substation. It's, it's not substantially away from that, so.
Okay. So, how, how do you get the power, Rick, from solar to the substation?
From the, from the, from the, the solar facility to there, we will either use the, the Excel distribution or the Excel transmission line that runs through there and hang on those poles, or we will go underground up, up through the, or through the Gibbs property to the road line and then come up again. We don't anticipate putting additional power lines up to get it up to the substation. But it would go pretty much a straight shot. The, the easement for that is a straight line, line shot to the, to the substation.
So, is the stray voltage more likely to happen underground than overhead?
No. No, the stray, stray voltage is a problem with negative grounding.
Okay. Because I know there's an issue with that.
Yeah.
And that, I don't know, come up with that, I'm sure.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Other similar responses, the vegetation, where necessary and where needed, where recommended by any residences that request it, we're more than happy to provide that. Same issues as the, as the other projects, so we're more than willing to comply. We've requested the same change to item number eight as well. But all the other conditions are, are fine. We'll provide the decommissioning plan and we'll pay the bond as, as requested. Thank you.
Do we open up the, can I make a motion, we open up public hearing?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to open the public hearing by Arlie and Kelly. All those in favor to open the public hearing?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public hearing is now open. Would anyone like to speak for or against petition docket number PC 12211702, Winona Solar LLC and Nathan J. Gibbs for the solar garden petition? Please come forward, state your name and your address.
Becky Clark, 18635, County Road 114. So, I'm the property that's directly east of this.
Okay.
So, we have a barn, we have a miner pit, everything. So, I guess my biggest thing is the stray voltage. We kind of talked about it at the township meeting and he had said that they would do some kind of a monitoring system at our farm if we wanted. He said it was just going to be like a $30 ohm reader from Fleet Farm. So, I made sure to contact some, a consult that does farm electric stray voltage. And he had recommended this voltage meter I brought. Some, I don't know if you guys have a copy of this. He had just said that, you know.
Go get staff to.
He had just recommended that we have a record of it, basically, because it can come up anytime. You know, these solar gardens are going to be in for 30, 40 years. And so, you never know what's going to happen, lightning, wind, you know, just who knows what. But, you know, to protect my herd, they're there every single day, you know, and if, if by chance stray voltage were to happen, you know, it, the first place it's going to go is in the miner pit because of the minerals. And so, that would be our farm. So, I'm just worried and, you know, it's just a little bit of insurance for both of us that if we can get that put on our farm, it would give me comfort to know that, you know, if we have a problem, we can address it right now, not, okay, what's going on with my cows, weird things are happening, you know, this is, you know, my family business and so it's very important to me and I want to make sure that it's safe. So.
Do you have a price?
I think they're between $7,000 and $8,000.
Okay. You did buy one already, did you?
No, I didn't.
Have you brought this up, have you brought this up with the company yet?
No, I, at the meeting, when they, he kind of discussed what they were doing, I went after the meeting and talked to a consultant, an electrician.
Did you incur a cost for the consult?
No. No, I was through a.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sure. Yeah, who, who did you talk to?
Mark Cook.
Mark, and who is he?
He is, well, it's through Tom Loren. I can get his contact information if you would like it, but I don't.
To know what his credentials are?
He does, he's an electrician. He does stray voltage litigation or, like consultation.
So, is he a lawyer or is he an electrician?
No, he's an electrician.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against PC docket 12211702? Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against PC 12211702?
I move to close the public hearing.
Steve moved to close the public hearing. Arlie, second.
One second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public hearing is now closed. Now we discuss, right?
Yeah. So, my first question is, going to be from the petitioner, is a system like this something that the petitioner would be willing to provide the neighbor?
What, what was the cost of the system?
I, I, I think there are substantially less expensive monitoring systems on the marketplace.
Can you come up to the, up to the podium, please?
Up, up front, there we go.
Thank you.
I believe there are, there are multiple systems out on the marketplace. Yeah, again, our, our request, you know, that, we don't mind the testing procedures as required. The long-term monitoring systems, we, we feel is, you know, providing a monitor, an ohm meter can be very simple or it can be very expensive. This is, is obviously an expensive example of that. Providing a meter that can be, you know, testing that, that they can monitor themselves on a daily basis, that they can, they can physically track from something else is, you know, relatively cheap, could be, you know, less than 300 to 500 bucks. And that's a system that's used by testers that, that are looking for stray voltage within dairy, dairy properties and trying to identify that. I'm not an expert on the testing and that's why we, we ask that the, the language for the testing procedure be added, that it does provide that criteria that is accepted practice by the state of Minnesota.
It looks to me like one of the benefits of this stray voltage monitor is that it does record, so you don't have to be looking at it to see if there's stray voltage right now.
Yes, I understand that, yeah.
And is, is the one you're referring to, does it have that capability?
No, it does not have the full-time monitoring, monitoring. I, I have looked at others and there is a, an individual in, in Winona that manufactures that. As a matter of fact, a gentleman by the name of Eric Brom, a, a system called the, I believe it's the Wave Rider. That, that system is less than half the proposed cost that they're referring to here. But however, again, what, what, what we're, what we're looking or being asked to do is, you know, above and beyond what the, the county ordinance has recommended here. It's not that we're adverse to the tester nor the long-term monitoring. You offered a, a, a system there that's, it's a standard. If the landowner or the dairy owner wishes to go above that and, and, and purchase their own system, you know, I think the first step there is finding out if there is an initial problem after the initial testing occurs. If it does show a problem, that that problem be identified as to what's causing that problem before any subsequent testing or blame is placed or expense taken, undertaken to determine who needs the monitoring system. Typically, from my experience, the, the stray voltage problem isn't or wouldn't be caused by a power generation system so much as other problems within the, the interconnection of that system to the power line and power problems with Excel's equipment or power on-site with the equipment that's being used at the, the facility that's experiencing that stray, stray voltage.
So, this IEEE standard 1695?
Yes.
How often is stray voltage tested for in that standard?
Well, the, the standard, that, that is the procedure for the test, okay, and what and how they.
For one, one discreet test?
For one individual test.
Okay.
Okay. That test, as, as you've recommended, be done prior to the installation of the facility by, by those properties, and as you say, that are adjacent. Their property is adjacent so that they, they could be tested. And then, tested again after the, the system is energized and then again annually, which, which seems reasonable. If there's a problem, then the procedure to identifying that problem is they're in that standard and also assessing who is responsible for that problem. And then whoever's responsible for it, they undertake the, the cost of repairing that or fixing it. If it's shown that the, the problem is, is occurring at the dairy facility, for example, then they would be responsible for repairing that and, and not the solar installation or the, the transmission lines or the substation. Again, that, that standard could be done by any tester as long as that standard is, is followed. Now, typically, Excel Energy will provide that standard to any of their customers upon their request. And they, and they normally do that.
So, Rick, how, oh, go ahead.
You said it would then, there's a base, there's a baseline and then upon commissioning and then annually?
The, the initial test sets a baseline.
Right.
Okay, it gives you an ambient reading of what the.
Prior to the facility.
Yep, prior to the facility being built. When the facility is built and powered on, okay, then it's tested again at, at the facility and the, and, and any of the adjacent properties that, that wish to be tested. That then would show if there's any difference from the baseline, which if it does show a difference, then it can be traced and they can follow the procedure to trace where that problem may be occurring and who's responsible.
Correct.
Yeah.
The question though is, in the condition, it refers to testing periodically as part of operation and maintenance. And I think you, you mentioned annually.
I believe annually was in the condition.
It says periodically.
This testing shall be done prior to construction, comma, at time of commissioning of the project that periodically is part of the operation.
Okay, so the periodic part, you could set the timing of that.
That was my question, thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Sorry, Arlie, go ahead.
Well, I, I guess my question is, Rick, you're going to do it periodically. How are they to know if, if there's a, in-between? Without, you know, the monitor you were talking about isn't keeping track of it continuously unless you're watching it. You know, say a, a couple of weeks go by and there's a power surge in there and without actually looking at it to see it, they're not going to know it. They have no record of it to come back and say, hey, there was a, you know, there was a.
Right, right, yeah. I guess, I guess the, what, what I've been asked to do with, with regards to this, you know, by our, our, our people and, and, and others within the Minnesota solar industry is that, that it's, it's, there are multiple different types of recording devices out there in the marketplace. Yes, you can, you can say that it, it, it needs to be done and, and a certain type of equipment needs to be used, but, but there also needs to be some, some standard to that. And, and by using the, the testing procedure that's adopted by the state of Minnesota right now, you know, we have a procedure that's acceptable to the state of Minnesota. If the individual landowner wants to step up and, and take on the additional cost of a, a higher-priced monitor or meter, I, I think that should be up to the individual person there. The first, the first thing that should be done, though, in my mind, is, is there a problem to begin with? Is, is, is there a current, is there a problem before construction starts? Is there one after the, the, the power line goes, or the power station goes online? And if not, periodic testing is going to confirm whether or not there are problems. The onsite and if, if, in looking back at the causes of stray voltage, it typically is not caused by the power production facility. It's caused by something between that facility, the end user, the customer, or the customer's equipment themselves. And, and the testing procedure gives you a, a tool to find that and to identify it. The monitor, yeah, that, the monitor's not a bad idea, you know, for a, a large-scale dairy operator, but for the average individual who's adjacent to a property like this, they're, they don't really need that. And I guess what, what we would like to see is that it, it not become a, setting a standard that adjacent property owners are in its testing procedure, that, that a monitor of $8,000 could be forced upon developers, whether it's us or anybody else, when something much less expensive, such as the procedure itself, is the first step, can identify that. If there is a problem identified and other means need to be taken to correct that, then, then those responsible should be held to that standard and correct it.
Chair, go ahead.
It seems though that before you start, if I were putting in a solar garden or any type of generation, I would want to know over the course of 30 days if there were any stray voltage surges. And the idea of a timer on this makes a lot of sense to me. The other thing is, if the Clark family's cattle go off feed, an annual. I'm, I'm well aware of the issue, secondly, caused by dairy and, yeah. Pretty worthless. Yeah. I would want continuous monitoring at a minimum for 24 hours by something that was acceptable. And that, that initial testing procedure is for a continuous period of time. It's not just they go in there and, and test it. They go in, they hook the equipment. They go in, they hook the equipment up, and they leave it for a specified period of time. And I'm not, I believe that is more than a 24-hour or 48-hour period of time, but, and it may be as long as 30 days. That initial testing can be left, and the testing equipment does monitor it during that length of period of time on a full-time basis.
So, I'm sorry, I guess I did not understand what you said about the IEEE 1695 standard. Is that the, this continuous testing for 24 to 48 hours you're talking about?
The testing period does not just occur over a one-hour period of time. You know, they will go in and they'll hook up a piece of equipment like that that monitors it for a length, a given length of period of time. And you could request that period of time be, you know, it could be 10 days or 30 days, you know, that monitor be left there during the test procedure.
So could you assure the applicants that there will be a 30-day test prior to installation and then a 30-day test after installation?
Yes, yes, I think we could, yeah.
Okay, so then I guess I maybe want to talk to the Clark, is it Angela? Becky, I'm sorry. Could you step up for a second? So, I don't know whether some of this is just playing out now or whether you've had conversations with this company. Is, would any of that be acceptable to you, or are you saying this is the only option that we're comfortable with?
Here's the thing, is, you know, stray voltage can be here one day and not the next, or, you know, so, you know, you talked about the cost of it being $7,000, and, okay, what do you do when I got a cow that dies, a cow that, you know, my prey rate goes down? Because these are, you know, effects of stray voltage, off-feed, lower milk production, that adds up. So all of a sudden, now I have to turn around and somehow record all of this and get a lawyer, and it's, it just seems to me like, I don't want to go there. I want this upfront, so I can see, hey, we got a problem, you know. I'll call in the electrician. If it's my end, I pay for it. If the electrician says, hey, you know, this is coming from someplace else, their garden, call them up and say, we need to take care of it. You know, I'm finding it like that, so I don't have, incur the harmful effects to my herd, my cows. You know, because it can be long-lasting if it does happen. So, and we've had Excel Energy out, and when they came and did last year, it was one day they left it hooked up. And when I spoke to this Mark Cook, he had said, for sure, a week, if not longer, it should be hooked up to really, you know, get a week's worth of information, because one, 24 hours, two days, just isn't enough. And, you know, and, you know, if they do that one-day testing, it's, you know, you don't know if it's gonna be sunny, cloudy that day.
So, but what I just thought I heard from the-
That he's gonna do it for 30 days?
30 days prior to establish a baseline.
Mm-hmm.
And then 30 days again afterwards. It's just that it would be equipment that could probably be used on other farms at other times rather than dedicated to your farm perpetually. And I guess part of my concern is that if the planning commission were to vote that this $7,000 piece of equipment has to be applied to your farm, I think any farm within the radius of any solar-producing plant in Winona County has the right, is entitled to a $7,000 piece of equipment.
Right.
But it sounds to me like the applicant is saying they'd be willing to establish, pay for whatever the equipment is, that I think it's equipment that you should be, hopefully be comfortable with, both before and after, but then again periodically. And then if there is a problem down the road, nothing still stops you from unfortunately having to get your own monitor and prove that they're damaging you. And I don't think they want to be in the boat of, you know, it can rack up to hundreds of thousands of dollars in a real hurry in a dairy operation, so. And, you know, that's gonna be with any solar application in the county, so.
Yeah, yeah, I just think it's our cases where they're building the solar site, the line goes all along, and the substation is directly across from our farm, so we're kind of, you know, circling it, basically, the whole thing. So, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, but, you know, at the same time.
Would you feel better, Becky, if, say, the solar company, and I don't know if they could do this, like, come and test it, like, quarterly?
That would be better.
Or the, at least the first year?
That's the thing, though, okay, it's gonna be there for 30, 40 years.
But isn't it fair to assume that if there's gonna be a problem?
No, because you can have stray voltage one day and not the next, and you can, you can pay somebody thousands of dollars to come in. I know there's a guy, they call Larry the Legend, who comes in, and he will do stray voltage, he's supposed to be one of the best people for it, and he, his consult fee is $8,000. That's before he steps on your farm. And after that, I know neighbors that have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars fixing, doing what he says. You can put in systems, and you can still have fix everything, and the next day have stray voltage from something else. You know, theoretically, it's just, it can happen at any time, it isn't-
That can also happen without a solar generating facility close by.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, we've had, years past, we've had stray voltage come from Excel's side that they've had to go back and fix, so.
I understand it's a real problem, but what I'm trying to do is establish a baseline and then prove that for the first year, everything is working right. And then after that, we would hope that it doesn't, you know, a problem doesn't develop. But if they're not generating more power than what they're allowed to generate or what the system is capable of, they should have reached peak at some point during the first year, shouldn't they have?
Well, I didn't want to jump ahead because, okay, so, the legislature, so much of what you're talking about, while I certainly sympathize, and I can understand that you're concerned, but much of what you're talking about is not really science or research-based.
Right.
So the Minnesota Legislature, back in, and it's a long time ago now, '97, because of concerns primarily from dairy farmers, funded research related to stray voltage. So if everyone followed the electrical code, there wouldn't be stray voltage. So it isn't a thing that sort of mysteriously happens from day to day. It happens because someone doesn't do their job right, or maybe there's something that breaks or wears out, right? So it isn't a thing that just appears and disappears. So there is, in fact, a stray voltage guide, and we've looked at it before when we talked about this quite some time ago. So I think a lot of, I think a permanent monitoring system is really not what is recommended by Public Utilities Commission or by those regulating bodies for our electric utilities. So I think it'd be great if the petitioner is willing to do the baseline testing, and I think that the testing in the first year quarterly, that would be fabulous. And yes, it would establish a baseline.
So in this research or in a criteria that was established in '97, I think maybe what's changing since that time is that was researching a power grid. Now we're putting another power input here, we're putting another power input here, and we're putting another power input here. And if you're somewhere in the middle and all of those facilities are generating power, it's a different, it's a different level of where's the power gonna go? It's trying to find the ground.
Right.
So those grounds might not have been, they might have been adequate all the time before, and now they're not, so.
But if everyone follows the electrical code, it theoretically should never happen. So when it does happen, it's because-
We're the ones right here at this table permitting these different power generating facilities.
So I think this, yeah, and I really think the solution that we've found, which is to ask for the periodic testing and the baseline testing, I think that's great. And if the petitioner's willing to do a little bit more than that in the first year, go for it, you know, that's fine. But I think a permanent monitoring system 24 hours a day for the life of the solar array, I think is probably a little excessive.
Sure. I guess I would agree that the periodic testing, the baseline, the commissioning, and periodic testing is great and should happen. It strikes me if you have such, I mean, you have a valuable operation going, and possibly you would want to have your own monitoring equipment, it seems, then if there was a problem, the way this condition is set up, I mean, you would just talk with the applicant, with the solar company, and work that out if you think that you are seeing a problem beyond the periodic testing.
So I'm sorry, what you're referring to is if a budding property shows stray voltage emitting from a source different than the solar array, the neighboring, oh, sorry, that's the wrong. If stray voltage is caused by the solar array, the solar project applicant shall be responsible for the cost of testing and the cost of correcting the stray voltage. That's the clause you're referring to.
But if they're not, then it's not their financial responsibility. But it seems to me that Mr. Ahern and-
So then if I incur any losses from that, then I have to get a lawyer and to be compensated for, you know what I mean? It's just kind of where-
Why should it be, why should it be your fault?
Right, you know, especially because there is the other solar going in with the windmills and, you know, a substation that's been there for a long time. I mean, they know they're doing upgrades, but, so, it's just a special situation, I guess.
Well, I do recognize your concerns.
Would you ask him to come to the-
Dusty Oliver, same address as Clark Farms. I was just wondering if everybody at the board has had access to this IEEE document as far as stray voltage testing and the standard they're gonna be held to?
We would have access to it.
We will have access to it, but it just came up today.
Okay, I haven't personally, I haven't personally seen that. I haven't had the chance to show that to my consultant that I would trust as far as what the stray voltage standard testing is, so I can't really.
I think when we got involved in it more in-depth was when there was a five-megawatt facility being proposed up near, no, Ridgeway. And that's a, you know, the reason I'm looking at this is because there's potentially two megawatts in close proximity, and you would actually be between them.
Correct.
And then there's yet this, so I was wondering how much is being generated by the, could potentially be generated by the wind towers? Because there's a triangle, and you're actually in between all of them.
Right, and another concern as far as, you know, stray voltage finds the best ground, and that's basically where it goes to. Another added factor is our manure storage area, which is basically on the property line closest to that, to that solar field, is basically a big magnet for grounding, so that would be another concern.
And with the multiple generating facilities in one area, it's very easy for one to say, it wasn't me, it was that one, or it was a combination of them, it's not my, it's not my fault. So it does become more, more complex, and I definitely see your concerns. But there's not, there's not a proven problem yet.
I would like to see a standard, though, for a testing procedure.
Yeah.
That's not been made clear to me or as far as to the board either, this IEEE standard. So I would like to be, I guess, have that IEEE standard to show to my person that I trust as far as stray voltage testing goes, and see what this standard is and what exactly their stray voltage testing protocol is.
Can the-
There's a varying degree of stray voltage testing. There's everything from a $30 ohm meter, which I have, everybody has in their shop, which we do do that on a regular basis as far as checking for stray voltage for our equipment, for the protection of our animals. But that, you know, there's nobody walking around 24 hours, 24/7 doing that. But there is power being used and power being produced from a solar facility on varying degrees, sunny days, cloudy days. It's not a consistent supply of power, and that sort of also concerns me a little. And as you said, if everybody followed the electrical code, stray voltage wouldn't happen. Yes, and if corrosion didn't happen, if, you know, overloading of the systems didn't happen, I mean, in a perfect world, we wouldn't have to worry about it. But, you know, corrosion is a concern, you know, and grounding is a concern. And like you, like you said, you add power sources to a grid, maybe, you know, current grounding might not be sufficient. So that's a concern of mine, and then the word periodic testing, what does that mean?
Well, we established four times the first year.
Okay.
And a 30-day period beforehand.
Well, we haven't quite established that yet, but that's what we've talked about.
Didn't the applicant even, did you agree to that?
Yeah, I, you know, what we'll agree to do is to utilize in the standard, the IEEE standard.
Can you come up here so we can hear? Thank you.
We would agree to use the IEEE standard, but allow for the monitoring equipment to be left in place for a total of 30 days for all of those testings in that first year. That monitoring equipment being left there is going to give you a digital report of a second-by-second during that entire period of time, that it's there, showing any spikes. If any issues show up on that monitored report, the IEEE standard shows how and what procedures to follow to identify what is the cause of that problem, if it's the solar installation, the, you know, or not the solar installation, the distribution system, the substation, or the end user's facility. Because those tests are going to occur at all of those locations between the, between us and that neighboring property owner who's drawing the electricity. But the standard then also alludes to the fact that, once it identifies where the problem is occurring and what is the cause of the problem, that at that point, then it can, you know, some assessment can be made as to who's responsible for repairing the problem. If it's the fault of the solar installation, then the solar installation would repair and resolve the problem. If it's not, then the solar installation would not be responsible for repairing that stray voltage problem.
So we were talking, like, 30 days before installation, 30 days after?
Yeah.
Would you still be willing to do a quarterly one?
If, 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 I think if, if the landowner would be satisfied that and the commission is satisfied with that, I think that a follow-up report would be not as expensive to do as the initial baseline report, because they basically know where they're going to test and what they're looking for, and they have a baseline to operate from.
I guess my, maybe my discussion is more with the committee than with either one of you at this point. But so what we're kind of tasked with is, certainly I want to-
We're still in the public hearing, aren't we?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sure.
Should we wait? Because I was kind of holding back, I'm sorry, yeah.
She's holding back.
You should ask them, at least you've asked twice, you have to ask at least one more time if someone's done.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against?
Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against P C, deck at P C 12211702?
So, I'm Nathan Gibbs, and I'm the owner of the property. And I guess from my view is, we already have a solar panel on our shed. It's a 40 kilowatt system, and it was tested, and, and there isn't any trouble with it. And Excel runs the line. So, I think the line going to Clark's would have to be the first, the first step, you know, Excel would have to test. And, because we could be getting stray po, or stray voltage from them guys having a motor that's partway shorted out. Okay? So, if it's fair for everybody to put in $7,500 testers, maybe Clark should have to put one in at our farm in case they have a motor that shorts out. So, I'm just, I'm thinking it's, it's getting a little out of hand. It's, it's probably not that big of a deal. And I would think if we have our place tested every year for stray voltage, being it's a dairy farm, and that's, that's just part of business. You've got to protect your own business, and if there's a problem, you have to take the steps or go after whoever is causing the problem. And that's, I don't, to me, that's part of being a, a business owner, and, and at any point you can, you can have trouble that is not your fault, and you incur the cost of fixing it and making it right. So, that's all I have.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Nathan.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. I lost track.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I guess we're in discussion.
Yeah.
So, I was kind of going to go in the, that same direction as Mr. Gibbs was just discussing. Where, so we're in the business, what, what we're being tasked with doing is the power line, the power grid system, uh, runs to everyone's property. And if you want to be totally protected and isolated against any chance of, uh, something going wrong on your property due to electricity, you almost have to disconnect from the grid. And there, so there, there is a certain amount of risk that goes with having those power lines coming into your property. We have to do our due diligence to not, uh, cause any problems for anybody. But I don't think that we can, we can't, we can never guarantee that no one's going to ever have a problem. We, you know, we've permitted other solar generating facilities throughout the county, and if we either deny or put unnecessary or far more owner standards on one than we did on others, that's hardly being consistent or fair. So, I, you know, I think the idea of the applicant going the extra distance of, of doing the, the monitoring beforehand, and then subsequent monitoring the first year and then annually thereafter, is that, is that what I under, it would always be annually?
Well, I, I, I think that's, you know, I, you know, it's, it's up to you guys how, how often that occurs beyond that point.
Okay, well, that, that's up to us.
The condition is says periodic.
We'd have to decide what periodically is.
But, but I mean, it's, it's, you know, for the end users, any Excel customer, they could request a test for stray voltage.
I'm going to guess there's going to be other dairy farms in the area that are going to come forward and want this testing.
Right. And, and part of that, part of that standard, though, states that, that when the testing is done, that the, when, when the problem is found, whoever is responsible for that problem, if the person that requested the test is done, is find that its equipment at their facility that's causing the problem, then they're responsible for the cost of the test.
I have a, um, just a question. I, I don't know, Eric, if you're going to be able to answer this off the top of your head, but do we have other solar farms similarly situated, like 370 feet away from a dairy farm?
We've issued-
Tim Spillstone.
Probably about six or seven at this point.
Okay.
Closest one of similar, Harrison, would have been the Dingfelder one.
He's got some young stock there.
But as far as operating dairies, probably not similar as far as nature of an operating dairy farm, but they have livestock in a similar setback, a distance, but not substantial dairy production.
Thank you.
Would staff know in these areas, say, west of Rochester, where they have all these windmills generating all kinds of power, is that going into a grid, or is that going into a separate line and being transmitted out of the area? Because those are all interspersed amongst farms.
They have a series of substations pretty similar. I think that's people's.
Some of them are people's, some of them are Excel's, yeah.
Seems like agriculture and-
So, the deal with those is that they, they manage them, and they curtail them from time to time. So, sometimes when you go by and they're not running, or some of them are not running, it's because they manage them to shut them down. It's a lot easier to shut down a wind turbine than it is, let's say, a coal-fired power plant. So, they can ramp them up and down really quickly. And so, when they have too much power, they just curtail them. So, I don't know that the ones that we see when they're not turning, the ones that are here in Winona County, I, they maybe are broken.
They're just hooked into our grid.
Yeah. But I'm assuming those could be curtailed, too. But they monitor that, that, and, and they have very sophisticated software that really tracks and controls each of those generators that's on the line.
But we don't have any conditional use permit with those two wind generators that we could prohibit them from generating power. I mean, they got their permit to operate, and we'd have to change the deal with them. And they might say, "We don't want to change the deal."
Yeah. Who buys their power? Is it Excel?
Dairyland, or?
Excel. Maybe up there, Excel would be up there.
Yeah.
You want to come up, Howard? No. If it's Excel, Excel is a trans, I mean, Excel is vertically integrated utility. They generate and they transmit, and then they sell to end users. And so, yes, they monitor, and yes, they could and would curtail if they needed to do that. They would have the software to manage their generation facilities.
I guess, Anne, I, I got a question. Those windmills up there, a few people have asked me now, this is off the subject, but while we're chatting, there's no light on. I want a, safety light. Move on.
It's snowing. Let's not, let's not waste too much time.
So, is this, I'm just getting a little confused here. Is this type of thing where based 30 days and 30 days after startup, is that something that really goes here, or are we not sticking to consistency, and that would be something that would be brought up with the applicant in his contract with the solar?
No.
I think we have to put it-
Yeah.
In a condition.
It'd be a condition.
Okay.
I wish we could guarantee all agriculture, all farmers that this is risk-free to them. But I feel as though to do what we can to drive the economy, we have to, we have to embrace as many different activities as we can in the county and try to make them work together. I feel with the-
So, so is the, the individual who spoke, is, is that the only abutting property? Are there other abutting properties?
No. Here's other, there's other adjacent properties there. That's the only one that spoke.
So, do you think we would want to offer this to all of them, or to Kelly's point that because of the operating dairy, to have some special language about that? I mean-
So, I don't know how this is going to work. I'm thinking the application before has got dairy. Aren't there equals?
Well, I mean, one of the, one of the ways that we actually decide upon what the condition should be is based upon the input we get from neighbors, and, and that's what we're getting. So, anyone on the last petition would have had the opportunity to, to be here as well, but they weren't. So, we have to make decisions based upon the information that's before us. And this is before us. Yeah. The concern is, are we offering this then for every future solar garden that comes in front of us? And do we want to do that? Well, if it's something that the petitioner, you know, what we've talked, my understanding of what we've talked about is a 30-day continuous monitoring as a baseline, 30-day continuous monitoring, um, once it comes online, and quarterly, uh, 30-day continuous monitoring for the first year of operation. So, um, that we're not asking them to invest a monitor specifically, um, for this farm full-time. So, it's not all that onerous. My feeling is that they probably have this equipment or will use it at, at several sites, you know. So, I think to, I don't know. I think it sounds reasonable, and the petitioner seemed to be-
One comment to that. We do not test. Excel will commission the testing.
Okay.
And then we have to reimburse Excel.
Okay.
So, that should be even better. Third party, right? That is not, it's not the company producing the power, providing their own test?
Well, it kind of is.
Rick, on other solar, solar things, do you test annually, or no?
No.
No? Okay.
No, we do, uh, in Karma County, we were required to do a baseline test, and then test after an operation. If there were any issues or any fluctuations, then we would do a follow-up test after that. So far, neither of those projects are online yet.
So, if somebody, someone would ask you to do a test, do they do it? Or, like, in this situation?
Any, any user can, especially large users, like small industrial users, like a dairy farm, can ask Excel for a test, and, and Excel can do that, and would, would do that.
Okay.
I'm not sure what the cost is for doing that. If it's found to be a, a problem with Excel's equipment, they're required to fix it. And, and again, that's part of that standard. The standard has that procedure for identifying who and what, what is the cause of that problem, if there is a problem.
So, does the, the company slash people that requested, is there a charge for that, do you know?
Um, that I don't know. I, I do know that, that we, as, as part of our process with interconnection, when we request a test be done, we're, we're expected to pay for that test. And those initial baseline tests are, are, I believe, in the neighborhood of about $3,500. And that's usually a contractor that, uh, Excel, and, and Excel's contractor for this is also a third party, uh, that, that's licensed by the state of Minnesota to do that. So, that's, that's where, again, what we call in this procedure, because that, that procedure identifies who can do the testing and to what standard you're testing. Requesting that the, you know, that, that the monitoring equipment be left on there longer than normal, which it would be if you're asking for 30 days. I'm not sure what, what the normal period of time is. But, but 30 days, it just means that they leave the equipment there with a recording device on that is going to digitally record that record for that period of time.
So, virtually what we're asking right now is 30 days prior, 30 days after, and quarterly for the first year?
Yep.
Correct. And then periodically is on there, too, right?
And then annually. Oh, well, period, whatever we define periodically as.
Where do we define that?
The question, it seems to me, then becomes, does this become the standard? Can you do this for one person? Or, you know, one operation? Or does this become the standard? I see this as pretty problematic.
Well, I guess it, in my mind, it might become a standard if there's a dairy farm within 370 feet.
I don't think we know how far the transmission stray voltage, stray voltage, once it goes into the grid, I don't think-
I mean, it would be reasonable for, for another neighbor to ask if they had a dairy farm and they were within 370 feet.
Or they could be-
If we, you know, similarly situated. We're not making it a standard, but we would need to be consistent. You see what I mean?
It could easily become a standard.
I, I think the way your recommended conditional use was, was that adjacent properties may request for testing.
Abutting properties.
Distance away from the site of the solar facility, it was adjacent property.
Do you see this as your expense or Excel's expense?
Well, it's, 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 this initial testing, uh, you know, is, is going to be, the baseline testing and the, and the testing upon commissioning is going to be our cost. And if, if this is a, a test that we're going to request be repeated on, on a quarterly basis, it's going to be our cost. If it's, uh, you know, the, the issue long-term comes up, if, if during that periodic testing, there's nothing that's showing up, and there's no, uh, from our facility, and, and, and there's no problem that is directed back to our facility is causing that problem, then, then assessing that, that those ongoing charges for something that, that's not being created by our facility, you know, that, that then becomes the, uh, part of that question. And that's, uh, that's where we, you know, kind of what, what we've been look, and looking at doing. And because of the, the Minnesota Department, you know, their standard procedure is that, you know, IEEE standard, which, which identifies how these testing go on and, and what, and how it can identify the problems, and then, and then who's responsible for the problem if, if a problem is found. Because if, if this testing, uh, you know, six months from now, there's another test done on the dairy farm, and they show some, some problems, but that problem is created by, maybe it's a faulty ground on a motor, or a pump motor, or something else, half that farm, then, then, you know, because, because we stepped up and, and authorized this testing, they, they're to the benefit of that, where it's, it may not be a problem from the solar, the solar farm originating the problem. And typically, uh, you know, the, the, the solar farms are not grounded. You know, we're, you know, we're, we're tied directly into the grid. We're tied into that distribution system and then into the grid. We don't have any, you know, we do have ground systems that, that, that ground, as, as any electrical system does, but we're not, uh-
You're trying to put the power out.
Yeah, we're putting power out. You know, we're not, uh, using that much power. And the, the tracker servos, the motors on our tractors that flip our, our panels back and forth, they're drawing power directly, direct current power directly from the panel itself, and that is not going on to, uh, you know, it, it's, it's not the alternating current power, it's a DC power for that. So, a little bit different situation.
The stray voltage is an issue that comes through the power grid, not through, not through the ground.
It's a fault of neutral ground or, uh, your negative grounding system. And it's, uh, you know, I've, I've had an optoelectrical theory background to, to know that I don't know.
So, Steve, Madam Chair, so, uh, the guide that's provided by a group of folks here in Minnesota, the utilities and the P U C, they talk about the most common causes of stray voltage, either on the farm or off the farm. And it is typically electric fences, equipment problems, improper separation of equipment grounding and neutral conductors, but it's really someone who doesn't wire something in an appropriate way. And off-farm, they really, though, there are-
And off-farm, they really, though, there are certain ones that could be attributable to a utility, like system load imbalance on a three-phase distribution line or improper functioning of utility equipment. But so, it, it can be on the farm and it can be from, like, not doing your wiring properly. It can be on the part of the utility. So, it doesn't always come from the grid.
Are they talking about general electricity or solar?
They're talking about common causes of stray voltage in general.
In general.
Yeah. Uh, Madam Chair, so, to, to Commissioner Stan's point, that what we have right now in our conditions doesn't say that it's optional, and it doesn't say if the neighbor, the abutting neighbor requests it. It says that the applicant is going, shall also arrange for the testing. So, I, I think that it, it isn't just at request. It's something that they're required to do.
Oh, absolutely.
It, so that if we pass it and put it into this particular set, this conditional use permit, I think to Cherie's point, we're setting a standard.
I'm sorry, what did you say? If we put it into this one, what?
That the next time a solar garden comes in front of us, we will be asking that petitioner to do the exact same thing.
I don't necessarily think we would need to. I mean, that's why there are conditions. Conditions are, are developed for a particular petition and a particular, particularly situated project. In this particular case, we have a dairy farm 370 feet that abuts the property and that farmer has spoken about concerns. So, we can develop a condition for this particular situation that would not necessarily have to apply to every other solar farm in the county. That's what conditions are for, in my mind.
If you have to treat them consistently, then anytime there was a dairy farm, a budding, I think then that would mean that would be what we would have.
And the dairy farmer is concerned.
It doesn't say if the dairy farmer is concerned. It says the petitioner shall...
But that's what the hearing is for. That's what this hearing is about. I don't know. That's...
Stephanie, could wording be put into number eight since the applicant, since the, the solar LLC is agreeing that they would do the base 30 days, the 30 days after its startup, and then quarterly? Since the applicant is agreeing to that, could that be put into this number eight so that it's not considered standard going forward?
It could be. So, did you speak on the podium?
I, I guess, of course, maybe I should, I should make the...
Come to the podium, yes.
Yep. Because we have the one concerned dairy farm, that, that the testing be limited to that, you know, our, our, our facility for that period of time as, as the baseline and the generating facility, and then the, the dairy farm, if the subsequent testing, if that subsequent testing shows a problem, then the testing could come back to the solar farm or the trans, you know, the, the substation and follow the procedure to determine where the problem is originating.
Right. Absolutely.
Okay.
But if we put that in about the standard, that'll cover that, correct?
The, the standard should cover that. Yep. So, and, and that's, if, if the testing is done to the standard on, on that period of time and those periods, then, then it, it, it should answer the, the, the problems and the concerns of, of those requesting the test. And, and you do have the one neighboring dairy farmer requesting the tests and, and requesting additional monitoring, you know, if during this initial testing period there is, that it's determined that there's an ongoing problem, that the cause of that problem be identified and the, and the, and the, the cause and whoever is the owner of that cause corrects that cause. And that cause may be the Excel energy itself, which is typically where it, it may happen or the farm. We as a solar, as a solar generator, if we're responsible, we'll correct our problem.
So, you're asking us to put something in there?
And that's what the standard does.
Yep.
The standard identifies a procedure for identifying the cause and assessing who's responsible. And if, if you're asking to do the testing on a, on a, a little bit more than what the initial ordinance asks because of the concerns of a neighbor with that neighbor's property, I, I, I think that that's probably reasonable. Because it is a large dairy, it's a, and, and, I, I grew up on a farm myself and, and we had dairy and, and I can tell you how many times I hung on to an electric fence or got shocked by a, a water trough in the dairy barn, so...
Okay.
Where are we at?
I'm, I'm reading, thank you very much. I'm reading this number eight again, and it says, I guess it's, uh, seven.
Well...
Oh, I'm sorry, 81. "If a budding property shows stray voltage emitting from a source different than the solar array, the neighboring property owner will be responsible for reimbursing the applicant for the cost of the testing." Well, what if that cause is actually the Excel substation? Shouldn't Excel be responsible for it? Well, we...
They would have to go after them civilly and...
Okay. Okay, thank you.
If there is a Minnesota stray voltage guide that is written by the Department of Agriculture and Excel and other people that are involved, that's why I'm assigned on, for investigations for farmers of livestock, the, the initial stray voltage testing by the electrical utility itself is free. So, in the intervening periods for concerns, you know, you go with utility, you say, "Look, I want some testing," you know, a two-day testing period ensues. There's a flowchart of that. So, there, you know, there are some things, you know, in addition to what, you know, the conditional use permit is saying, it doesn't mean that there is no avenue that has been recognized for just ordinary stray voltage. And then, you know, where is it coming from? Utility is, is the one that does that investigation. Much like in this case, they would send the testing out. There's, there's one other avenue that is...
So, do we, is the last thing that we heard, that the addition of the clause about the standard to the testing really addresses?
I think it addresses who's responsible if there's an issue found.
Not the 30-day, correct?
No, there's no timeframe in the standard, correct?
Correct.
Well, I, I don't know, you know, what the standard of monitoring, when they do that initial testing or any of the, the stray voltage testing, the monitor is left booked up for a length of, a period of time. I don't know exactly what that time is with, with the test, but, but that, that would probably be on the standard, how long that is connected. If, if you're requesting it, you know, that it be left on an additional amount of time, up to 30 days, you know, I, I, it's, it's my understanding that if there's an initial problem, it's going to show up much quicker than, than the 30-day period of time, it'll probably show up the first time that somebody turns on their equipment. What continuous monitor is going to show is, is that after that equipment is shot, has turned up, you know, subsequently, you know, if there's some wear and tear on that equipment down the road through daily use that at some time it might short out, then, you know, a short would show up on that monitor much more quick. The, the solar farms themselves, you know, the, the energy production is monitored on a milli-sec basis, it's continuous, you know, so that the, the producer, we as, as, as the, you know, the facility operator, we can monitor that in real time as to how that's producing. There's, there's precautions and equipment set up there that clips those peaks so that it doesn't overburden, you know, the, the transmission system or the, the distribution system.
Sure.
Madam Chair, I guess, one option that you do have, because it seems like we don't know a lot about this standard, we don't know a lot about what recommended processes for testing and things like that would be, you can always consider tabling this to obtain that information to make sure that you're making an appropriate decision that will meet the needs of everyone.
Good, thank you.
Do we have the time to do that on this, in this case?
We, we can extend the 60 days of waiting.
Okay.
Cherie, I guess I was just going to say, having, you know, thought and listened to this, while I very much appreciate the concerns of the clerks and regarding their dairy, I feel like the condition as it is written seems very adequate. I'm not comfortable in writing a condition specific to one situation, and as Mr. Gibbs pointed out, it's, it, continuous monitoring on the farm may be a cost of doing business. If there is a problem, then they can go to Excel or, or the solar garden operators, and they can then, with the E-E testing, try and determine the responsibility. But I, I'm not very comfortable about writing a condition for one, one farm because of how that can unfold in the future.
I, I share Cherie's concern, and I am looking at the document that Kay has mentioned to us, and the recommended test is a 24-hour test, and then there's a, like, a whole protocol. And that's really what's being recommended to us. This is the Department of Ag?
Department of Ag, Excel Energy, and several other entities that signed on to this.
Yep, and our electric utilities. So, I guess I share Cherie's concern, and I would love to leave in this testing and, and I think we're going above and beyond by performing the stray testing, stray voltage testing that we're doing. I think we're doing more than what other counties are doing already.
I guess my thought is Rick's offering to go farther than he really needs to. You know, and I, I understand Becky and her farm situation, but we got to do with what we're given, and Rick is going farther than he needs to.
But you're saying you don't even want Rick to do the 30 days?
Well, if he wants to do it, I'm not comfortable writing the 30 days into the condition.
I'm not either.
For, for me to support the petition, at a minimum, that's got to be in there. There, the petitioner's willing to do it, we have to do our due diligence in trying to bring both, both sides of these two businesses together.
So, my concern is that we're setting a standard and it's one that every garden in the future is going to have to. And he's talking about a $3,500 test, so...
And you talk about a cost of doing business for the farmer, there's a cost of doing business for the solar company too.
So, if, I believe that our counsel indicated that there would be a way to, to write this condition to not make it the standard for every garden, is, is that what you're proposing, is that it should be?
Well...
Or would you be in favor of we...
Well, the solar company's offering to do it, you know, to work, work with the farmer. I, I, you know, we, we could put that in there as, you know, it was offered that they will do it, not that they have to do it, but they're offering to do it. You know, and I, I understand Becky, and I mean, she, she would like to see that happen. Rick is offering it, you know, the 30 before, 30 during, and...
And I'm not against that, I'm just against it being a condition for every future installation. Otherwise, I, I'm okay with it.
I think that that is an arrangement that could happen between Rick, the solar garden, and this, and not be a part of it, not be written as a condition. I mean, they're quite capable of working that out between themselves. We have the base here as written in this condition. If to satisfy these concerns and goodwill, you want to work that up, that seems like that can be worked out privately. And the E-E testing will designate responsibility if there is a problem.
Could, could we put it in there as requested by the, the farmer?
I guess...
Kind of leave it as plain?
I have a question for staff on this. Isn't that what conditions are for? A condition is put on a particular petition because that particular situation requires it. We are not setting a standard here, and I think we can say, even as we write it, this is specifically for this particular petition.
Correct. There's no precedent as far as conditional use permits go. Each case will continue to have its own differences based on setbacks, physical attributes, situations. You can draw some similar parallels with some situations, but as maybe pointed out in the staff report presentation, there is, as what that mapping exhibit shows that's displayed, is that you do have...
Unique.
...concentrations of dairy operations that are in close vicinity, and to mitigate potential adverse effects to that, you are within your arena to have different conditions as you see as deem appropriate for that circumstance.
But we also have to remember that we do frequently reference back to similar petitions that we will copy and paste language from one to another, so you would have to be framed specifically for exactly what you're looking for in order to make it clear that that's not the intention of that condition.
So, what do we do if a farmer crashed a highway once?
That's why we have to very specifically craft provisions, so you have to be very specific about what you wanted to say, and then apply some language for that.
Did you have something you wanted to say?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I, I think, you know, with, with regards to this entire situation that you're dealing with, that, that's why our advisors, our, our lenders, our investment group and, and their building full of attorneys recommended the E-E standard language that is an accepted procedure within the state of Minnesota to identifying and testing for stray voltage procedures, and it's a specific standard for stray voltage testing. Above and beyond that, I, I think working with the individual dairy farmer next door as a good neighbor to resolve this situation with that individual neighbor on a, on, on just this one case with regards to this is, is maybe something that, that doesn't need to be so much mandated as it just needs to be worked out between us and that neighbor, as, as was alluded to before. And, and to have an agreement for us to work with them to come to a, a reasonable resolution on how that's done, it, it may be something that's similar to this long-term monitoring system, but maybe not a $7,500 system. As I said, there are other pieces of equipment on the market for a lot less, but if that becomes a requirement of the condition, then you're probably going to have other people come up at some point in the future demanding that same treatment when it may not be necessary for everybody. In this case, that may be the simplest solution outside of your standard procedure right there, and adding that is, is that we work with that neighbor to find a solution individually and independently of, of this requirement to provide them a piece of equipment that can give them that peace of mind.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to ask a question of Assistant Attorney Nodal. Did you have some language for us?
As I said, I need to know specifically what you want included in the overall crowd language.
Okay. I guess I would, I would like to see language specifically for this petition based upon...
I guess I would like to see language specifically for this petition based upon the proximity of a dairy operation, 370 feet, and the concerns of the neighbor to require a 30-day continuous monitoring for stray voltage prior to operation, 30-day continuous monitoring once the solar operation goes online, and a quarterly 30-day continuous monitoring for the first year of operation of the solar farm. Yes.
The 370 feet is not from the dairy farm, it is from the nearest residence.
Okay. What is the dairy farm?
Is it a Clark Dairy Farm?
Yeah.
It's about 1,580.
So that's from...
Just identify the farm.
370 is from this southwest corner to this house right here.
Thank you.
It's 1,580 from the northeast corner of the solar array to their house. What they're talking about being in close proximity is the substation that's located here to their dairy farm.
Got you. Okay, then that is specifically that...
Okay, so the issue is that the wiring is going to come how close because of the substation? How far is the substation?
Comes up straight north.
That black line is still...
Right.
And green side of it.
Yeah, so could you give an estimate on the distance from the farm to the substation?
It would appear to be in the 400 foot.
400 feet? Okay. So, and the issue is that the wiring is going to come within 400 feet of the dairy because that's where the substation is located?
Did you get that? Substation wiring within 400 feet?
So what you'd like to see, every quarter, put it on there for another, an additional 30 days?
Every quarter for the first year only, and then periodically, annually thereafter?
Kelly, if, what if they're not finding any problems? They do this 30 days quarterly, and there are no problems, what, and then you...
Then we've learned something. Then we've learned that when the next one of these comes up, that we don't have to require that. You see what I mean?
I don't know that we would ever be informed of the testing results.
The ongoing expense.
Okay, the ongoing expense of the testing procedure is, you know, if the easiest solution to this whole thing is purchasing a monitor for the dairy farmer that continuously monitors for stray voltage.
It'd be cheaper off spending the $7,000.
It's much less expensive than planting a row of trees for screening in order to facilitate and move this process forward without any unnecessary conditions, and that, and a suitable monitor, I think, can be acquired for substantially less than the price that's there, but that, you know, that's, and again, you've got an individual in Winona that's been building these things for years for a major tester of, you know, you can go to strayvoltagetesting.com, and you come up with the company out in New York State that's been doing this for since 1984, I think, and Eric Brahm here in town builds that equipment and has several monitors on hand that, maybe it's up to these folks to go talk to them to find a suitable monitor that's acceptable in price that meets their needs.
Okay, so it sounds like you might prefer a solution where you work with the neighbor to come up with a suitable piece of equipment?
I think so.
We could table this to allow that to happen, right?
For this condition?
Yeah, we could table this petition.
Not the petition. We'd like to see the petition come to a resolution to get permitted. We're on a very tight time schedule with Excel Energy to be online with these, and if we're looking at further delays on this, it could be a requirement, say, before construction starts.
Because doing that would be cheaper than having it continuously...
Absolutely, yeah.
You're telling us that's like $3,500 a time?
Yeah, $3,500 bucks is, you know, otherwise, you know...
Six?
If we're doing this above and beyond what your ordinance, your suggested requirement already is, then that's, we've paid for that monitor four times in the first year already, and then every year for the next 35 years after that.
Okay, Rick, what would you say in this situation? You do the baseline?
Yes.
Do a one week or 30 days after, and that monitor, is that feasible?
I think that'd be acceptable, yes.
Becky?
Good.
Make it simple, meeting over.
Thanks.
Right?
Thank you.
And we write in the language because the substation is so close to their farm?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Proximity of the substation is within so many feet is the reason we're doing it.
400, yep. So restate that, was that a motion?
No, I was just talking.
30 days before?
30 days before, 30 days after, a 30-day period. A 30-day period of, yeah. And then the machine go on after that?
30 days continuous.
Baseline before and after.
And then 30 days after, online, after it's online, and then the monitor.
And it should work.
Make it a motion. Based upon...
And we have to have it approved.
We've got to wait until she's got the wording.
We'll have to have Natalie read it back to us first.
Stephanie.
Stephanie.
Stephanie, I'll get them all right here, yeah.
To make things simple, we're going to make this 8A. This is going to aim into commission of the project, make it a standalone...
Okay.
Okay.
Madam Chair, could we have a break while Stephanie's doing that?
Okay.
A five-minute break?
Sure, I guess. We'll take a five-minute break. Curbage. Stephanie.
What I have proposed here is, to address concerns regarding, this would be 8A, to address concerns regarding stray voltage on the neighboring dairy farm, parcel 09000290, due to proximity to the substation and lines between the array and substation, the advocates shall arrange for 30 days of continuous stray voltage monitoring prior to construction, and 30 days of continuous stray voltage monitoring following commission of the project. Advocates shall also provide the neighboring farm with continuous monitoring equipment following commission of the solar array.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Very good, yeah.
I'd like to move that we accept the staff analysis, maybe hurting the CUPs, and add to the conditions 8A as just read by Assistant County Attorney Nodell.
Second.
Plus, wait, plus the other request, right? The testing to the standard, right, on 8?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, to IEEE 1695.
There we go.
Do you, you seconded that, right?
With, yeah.
Yeah. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the conditions as is with the addition of 8A and including the electrical standard that was IEEE, was it 1695? It's not on this piece of paper.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The petition passes. You will go before the county board in January as well, and for the final notification. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the draft of Winona County zoning ordinance buffer. Staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kate Qualley, I'm finding an environmental services director. We, as Winona County, accepted administration of the state buffer law last summer under the standards long in play with our shoreline ordinance of the Winona County zoning code. However, in October, the Board of Water and Soil Resources contacted Winona County and several other area counties, and stated that our zoning ordinance had to be adopted, or excuse me, amended to include a standalone buffer ordinance. I'm just trying to, there, that's better. So, Tom Bowser, affectionately called Bowser, just to not say the Board of Water and Soil Resources repeatedly, will understand that that is who we're referring to, sent a model ordinance out to all of the counties in question, including us. So this ordinance needs to be compatible with our longstanding shoreline ordinance as administered by staff and Daryl Buck and the Winona County SWCD. So the overview and the information that is in your packet, the key things that they felt were missing from our county and other counties was a defined DNR buffer protection map, and you have a map included on your desk. That's the official DNR map that the SWCD used to evaluate those properties that were, that had the 50-foot buffer or didn't, based on our shoreline ordinance. We had to add language that said grandfathering in of existing uses would not be permitted because that would be against state statute. We could be more stringent, but we can't be less stringent, and that granting of variances was not allowed for the riparian buffer to align with state statute 103F.48. So the riparian protection and water quality practices that Commissioner Herbert referred to earlier, we just called a buffer law, but that's, again, what we're referring to. So we've also had to, with this draft ordinance, clarify the administrative process to match Bowser requirements, and state that one thing that they didn't recommend, but they wanted to have it in the ordinance, was any fees that could be involved with, you know, continued noncompliance for 11-month period after a letter of correction action would go out from our department would be placed in the ordinance, and we said, that's not practical. We approve a fee schedule every year, that has other kinds of administrative penalty fees or just fees in general, and so we got permission to put it into the fee schedule, which is a little more nimble, and if we want to change those fees annually based on the cost of living or some other information that comes out from the state, we can do that more quickly. And it's still reviewed, of course, by the county board. So there's not anything in the ordinance that requires the SWCD to do anything differently than they're required to do by the state about their inspections or anything else. It's just about what happens when a list or a notification of noncompliance comes to our department, and since we've accepted administrative responsibility for it, then kind of what happens next. So those are kind of the main sections, a couple of definitions, how it works when we receive a list of noncompliant properties, and then getting that language cleaned up. So since the time of the first packet going out, we received an email notification from the Board of Water and Soil Resources that the corrected language after they reviewed their first draft and produced a second draft, which is what you have in your packet, was acceptable to them. If you pass it, know that they will then approve it once it has gone through our process and through the board if there aren't any significant changes, as they put it. So it's just good information to know that it did meet the standards that they are requiring, and just wanted to mention that because they would like to have it as part of the permanent record, and that's why it's included in the packet. So that is what I have for you in addition to the actual ordinance itself.
Are you entertaining questions?
Anything I can do to help the process along.
So, nothing changes in 11.3. What we have is an entirely new section that gets added to the end of...
It would be 11.9.
Yes.
That's correct. Bowser has specifically stated that they do not want shoreline ordinances revised, and ours is a longstanding ordinance that has had, you know, very excellent compliance, which is why our county is in such good shape, really, because this has been a longstanding practice as well as ordinance. So this is a standalone ordinance, and that's how they want it.
Okay. Is there a deadline for when we have the final approval ready for our ordinance, for our big ordinance?
Well, typically, you know, we would, you know, move to a public hearing situation and go through the regular process. They have not stated a deadline for it. You know, we can move forward, we have our shoreline ordinance, we have a state statute to operate within, we have accepted responsibility for that, but I think more or less they've stated that if it could be expedited or done expeditiously and not dragged out, that would be preferable, but that was an informal thing, it was not, you need to have this done by February, no.
And I understand that there's a penalty if we just decided not to do it, right? I mean, that we must comply.
They didn't state that there was a penalty, but they've said that, you know, the following counties are not in compliance with having a standalone buffer ordinance. Some didn't have a shoreline ordinance or a buffer ordinance, and we're having to do both, working with a DNR more closely with the former and then with Bowser with the latter. We luckily had our longstanding shoreline ordinance. So they basically said, yes, you need to do this, even though back in July, they said, no, you don't need to do this. So I was an overly, not late October, but new information apparently has put this requirement on others besides us.
I read on the corn growers' website that the municipal aid could be withheld for counties that didn't comply. Is that true?
Well, they didn't actually say that to us, but they didn't seem to be too flexible about the concept either.
So is your recommendation to set a public hearing for this particular thing, or are we going to roll it into other changes we're making for the, to the zoning ordinance?
Well, to answer your question specifically, Madam Chairman and Commissioner Stanich, I would like to see this move along on its own, because we're taking the input that you're giving us tonight on the solar, having had one internal staff meeting to start comparing counties on a big spreadsheet, to move that along in the IUP, the next two things on the list that we received from you folks as well as the county board, and so we might want to bring that in, you know, late January, so then you would maybe have them pretty close to simultaneously, but maybe one meeting off, if that's all right with everyone here.
So are people comfortable with this, and we want to say we approve this and move towards setting that date?
Yes, I think so.
I think so, it's already state statute, so...
Yeah, I'm not sure we have much of a choice.
One thing about, you know, enforcement and the compliance parts of it, more or less the bureaucratic part of it from 5.0 through most of the end of it, by taking the administrative penalty role, Winona County has, you know, then taken it away from just being administered by the state agency, and already through meetings with the SWCD and the Whitewater's Joint Powers Board, we've had good input on how we move forward, and we're still fulfilling Bowser's required steps, but we're doing it in a way that we feel like we've been able to get that input incorporated into the process. that we feel like we've been able to get that input incorporated into the process for a more locally user-friendly kind of, if there is going to be some, something like that associated with a state mandate.
So would you be looking for a motion to proceed with scheduling the public hearing, or just talk about the dates, or...
No, I'll make the motion then to set the public hearing on the buffer law language for an explaining commission meeting. As written.
Second.
Steve made the motion, early seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Board of Adjustment update. Board of Adjustment did not meet today. County Board update.
County Board approved manufactured dwelling on Michael and Nicole Addus, Addus, and we approved the Charles Skulp dwelling as well. It's, County Board, the Planning Commission, we'll head there. I want to take this opportunity to thank you, Joy, for your service to Winona County, the citizens, and I'm glad we're able to make good use of you tonight.
Thank you, Joy.
Throw you a Nazi on your way out, so, thank you so much for, for all you've done for the county. And I guess that's all I have, unless anyone has any questions. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Oh, oh, oh. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Kelly made the motion, and Vince seconded. All those in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Good job, Joy.
Hold on.